I'm going to call this meeting to order at 6:30. Welcome, everyone. Thanks for braving the rain and coming out to be with us tonight. First order of business, City Attorney, do we have any closed session reports?
There are no reports to report out of closed session today.
Okay. Let's see. Evelyn, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Rhodes. Councilmember Lister?
Here.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Here.
Mayor Thomas?
Are there any items for agenda review?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one item. We have a, before you is a supplemental agenda item for Agenda 9A. It is a list of correspondence that had been received regarding that agenda item for support for a particular grant.
And those are reports that were not handed to the City Council prior to tonight's council meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I move that all resolutions and ordinances presented tonight be read in title only and all further reading be waived.
Second.
Call for a vote?
I've voted several times.
This is the only one that's working? Okay. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
If there is any member of the City Council, if any member of the City Council may have a conflict of interest, any reason why that member must abstain from consideration of any matter on this agenda, he or she should declare so at this time. Hearing none.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the first item on the agenda is Item 1D1, Presentation of a Proclamation declaring the month of January as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and Heidi DiNardo is here to read the proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Before I read the Seroptimists Stop Human Trafficking Proclamation, I'd like to invite Chair Debbie Samuel, along with members of Seroptimists Seamy Valley. Come on down. The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas in the United States, approximately 40 million victims are imprisoned as modern day slaves around the world. Each year, between 800,000 and 900,000 people are trafficked across international borders and into the United States, with cases reported in all 50 states. And whereas, according to the Ventura County Coalition Against Human Trafficking, 60% of the female youth in the Ventura County Juvenile Facility are estimated to have been sex trafficked. And whereas, the Seroptimists International Club of Seamy Valley wants to raise awareness, advocate for stronger laws and enforcement, take action to empower women, and ultimately end slavery. And whereas, Seroptimists are recognizing Stop Human Trafficking Awareness Day on January 11th, 2023, to encourage the community to join in their efforts to end this exploitation. Now therefore, January 11th, 2023 is hereby proclaimed as Seroptimists Stop Human Trafficking Awareness Day, in the city of Seamy Valley, in recognition of their continuing commitment to educate and bring awareness to the citizens of Seamy Valley, presented this ninth day of January 2023.
Mr. Mayor, we do not have any public statements for Item 2. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3A1, Selection of City Council Members to Interview and Nominate Perspective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members, and Emily Habib is here to present this item.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members are appointed to alternating two-year terms, with approximately one-third of the seats expiring every eight months. The next term of appointments is scheduled to commence on March 1st, 2023. A general recruitment to fill 16 positions was initiated on October 3rd, 2022, and concluded on October 31st, 2022. The city received a total of 36 applications, eight for Neighborhood Council 1, eight for Neighborhood Council 2, seven for Neighborhood Council 3, and 13 for Neighborhood Council 4. In previous recruitment cycles, the City Council has typically selected two subcommittees, each consisting of two City Council members. Staff is recommending that the City Council select two subcommittees, each comprised of two City Council members, to interview and nominate prospective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Lister?
Thank you. Not any questions. And just, you know, our normal button that says we want to speak is missing as well. So I don't know if there's something in the system that's not on, just figure out, anyway, which might be, which might be why the voting is, but I'm sorry. Actually, I was pleased to see that, that we have more applicants than, there are four seats available for each district, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
And we have many applicants for each, and so that's, I just want to say thank you for that there, that we have such interest in service, and that that's wonderful. I certainly would be happy to volunteer to serve with whomever on this council that you would like, but whatever you desire. So Mayor, I think that there are obviously five of us, and four of us need, two and two, so you, anyway, at the leisure of this group.
Historically, it's been the four council members, or am I wrong? Because I don't mind doing it as well.
Yeah, I was going to make the suggestion of the council members, based on what's happened in the past of Mayor Pro Tem Judge and Councilmember Kavanaugh for 1 and 3, since they did 2 and 4 last time, and that Councilmember Lister and myself were 2 and 4, but if you want to participate.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to take my spot, I'll be happy to let you do it. You haven't done it yet.
Okay. All right, I will do that.
Sounds great.
I think we got it.
So we need a motion?
I'll make a motion, then. I move to select two subcommittees, each comprised of two City Council members, to interview and nominate prospective Neighborhood Council Executive Board Members to each board, with Mayor Pro Tem Judge and Mayor Thomas for Neighborhood Councils 1 and 3, and Councilmembers Lister and Rhodes for Neighborhood Councils 2 and 4.
Second.
Call for a vote?
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Lister?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3C1. I apologize. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 3A2, Appointment of Representation of City Council Board Members on Boards, Commissions, and Committees, and Consideration of Recommended Changes, and City Manager Gable will present this item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Traditionally, the City Council each year decides their appointments to the different committees and commissions that are available for council members to sit on. At the December 12th meeting, you selected the Mayor Pro Tem, and at this meeting, it is the staff's recommendation for you to decide on the boards, commissions, and committees. As part of this agenda item, we're also asking the City Council to look at five committees and making some changes to those. One is the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. Second is the Residential Building Permit Allocation System Committee. Third is the Arroyo Semi Committee. Fourth is the Task Force on Heroin Prevention, and last is the Task Force on Homelessness. Each one of those has a change. We are recommending the Residential Permit Allocation System Committee and the Arroyo Semi Committee be eliminated. Asking the Council if they would like to reengage the Heroin Prevention Task Force. There has been a recommendation from the prior Council on changing of the name of the Task Force on Homelessness, and lastly, changing the, the need for the Affordable Housing Subcommittee to only request the Subcommittee to meet when there is financial consideration being requested by the applicant for an affordable housing project. With that, I will leave for any questions for the Council.
Should we address the changes to the committees before we decide assignments, I think?
I think, yeah, I think that would be appropriate. So you can address the five committees first, and then you can look at the assignments that begin on page 5.
All right, so let's do those one at a time, then, I guess.
Yes. So Affordable Housing Subcommittee, we have looked at, there's a brief write-up in the staff report regarding the committee itself, with changes to state law and the state law's approach to housing and the number of meetings that can happen on a, on a project that does include affordability. We're recommending that the Affordable Housing Subcommittee only be engaged when a developer's requesting financial contributions from the city on their project.
So we would just do it like we just did with the Neighborhood Council? Just pick two council members to be on it at that time?
Well, you will, you can assign the, the next part of this agenda item, you will assign persons that will be on the Subcommittee, and it will only meet at the time if, if financial consideration is being requested.
Is that the only time we met before?
We would meet if there was an affordable housing agreement, that, the agreement may not have had any financial consideration.
Okay.
And I do have a question about that, about this specific committee. I just want a clarification, because I read the report, exactly what qualifies as financial consideration? For instance, I mean, if they're going to contribute money?
It's money. If they're requesting the city...
It's requesting, if the city provide money to support the project, per se. So, anything else? Let's say a parking consideration, or setback, or anything else that might be part of their, their request or ask, would not trigger this meeting, just if they want the city to give them money, or to...
That's correct, because the state law has fairly well usurped our ability to regulate concessions and waivers.
Right.
The developer pretty much walks in with what they need.
Well, and I think the concern is that they are also only certain number of meetings allowed before it has to be approved.
That's correct.
And that's why it's...
And, and the Affordable Housing Subcommittee, if it's only meeting to discuss concessions and waivers, which we don't have a lot of discretion on, that eliminates one meeting out of five that are allowed.
So do we need a motion to change this committee, or is it just a general understanding?
Or, or just a consensus is fine, that we should change it to that, and then we can wrap that up into the motion.
Yeah.
I think there's consensus.
The second item is the elimination of the Residential Permit Allocation System. This again falls back to state law, where state law generally does, prohibits the adoption of implementation growth, implementation of growth plans in the community. So this one's contrary to state law.
So the...
We recommend eliminating it.
Eliminating it.
Correct.
Okay. I agree with that.
Yeah, we're fine.
The Arroyo Semi Committee was put together primarily for the Arroyo Greenway. The committee has not met in years, and the Greenway, at this time, is really being managed, both operationally and maintenance-wise, by the Park District. The plan is in place for its ultimate development, and if any changes were to happen on that development, that could modify the specific plan that was, that is in place for that project, which would then have to come back to the City Council for modification, anyway. So we, in looking at the, the committee itself, we don't see a need for that committee to exist, to continue to, to look at the Arroyo Greenway project.
Does, just out of curiosity, does the parks, do they have a committee that actually looks at design elements or discusses priorities? Because I know there, even when they came and spoke to us, that it's phased in certain phases, and they're deciding which phase to address next. I just want, and I, I could see the involvement of a committee making those decisions, but I guess my question is, does Senators in a parking record, do they have a committee that is dedicated to that? It's such, just such an important part of our community, I just...
They don't have a committee dedicated to that, but the, the Greenway has already been designed within the specific plan. There is a document that, that identifies how it will be from Cuenor to Madera. So it's already in place. Now they're just building it, and they're building it in phases as funding becomes available.
The Park District really is only working on the grants at this point in time, because the plan's already there.
I get it, I get it. Yeah, I, I suspect maybe they could be updated, but it's not our purview, so that's okay. So be it.
And I had the opportunity of going to the Park Board meeting this past week, and they discussed this, and that they're going to be implementing Phase 5 coming up, and so everything is going along according to schedule, looks great. They did talk about some potential new property acquisitions they might want to make as a way to extend all the way to the east, but that would be a totally separate thing, so that doesn't change the status of this committee.
Correct. Yes.
So consensus on that item?
Exactly.
Next item on the agenda is, perhaps a little bit more of a discussion point, is the continuation or re-engagement of the Task Force on Heroin Prevention. There is a memo in your packet that describes everything that has happened to this point with the committee, with that task force. I would, would like to call on Interim Chief Shorts to come down, because I think most importantly is what is happening at the county level with the, with the sheriff and a new task force that he is engaging to deal with these particular issues. But the, in the staff, in your staff report, beginning on page 20, is an update on where the committee has been, and what we have been doing over the past several years to try and engage with the community and to, and to deal with these issues. But at this point, I'll yield to Chief Shorts and let him give a brief description of what's happening at the county level.
Good evening. The Seamy Valley Police Department is assigning a narcotics detective to the Ventura County Interagency Pharmaceutical Crimes Unit sometime this month. The acronym for that unit is PCU. This team will include detectives from other agencies within the region. This team's main purpose is to investigate overdose deaths. PCU's overreaching goal is to, is the arrest and successful prosecution of narcotics dealers selling opioids in our, in our county, which result in unintentional death from overdose. Generally speaking, these cases are reactive in nature, and enforcement is directed at target subjects developed through overdose death investigations. The team's main focus is going to be fentanyl sales. PCU is an active member of COSS, which is County Opioid Abuse Suppression Task Force, which is a collaborative, multifaceted work group focused on addressing the opioid crisis in Ventura County. PCU is currently at the forefront of community education in conjunction with Ventura County Behavioral Health. PCU is working in collaboration with our DA's office to begin second-degree murder charges on these cases. And just to note that our detectives, our standalone SIU unit, has been successful in some of those cases in having narcotics dealers prosecuted. Additionally, the task force will also focus on illegal marijuana grows in residential and commercial areas, as well as investigation of illegal cells and narcotics through medical practices. That concludes the information I could provide on the task force at this time. We're joining this task force, which is already in, in process, and obviously, some of the information I cannot release due to the nature of some of the ongoing investigations. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those for you.
So in addition to that, I do want to note that the, there are, there are state legislation that is happening now that is pushing out Narcan to the public in various locations, the, also stepping up at the, at the school level. So there, there is an active audience right now in order to deal with this issue, especially with regard to fentanyl, where it seems to be a drug of choice, at least at this point in time. But it's, it's up to the council at this point if they would like to, to reengage the task force. So I think at this point, we're available for any questions.
Well, I think it's important to have an educational component here as well. So I don't know where that would fit in, but you know how I feel about that.
Absolutely, and what we will do is collaborate with the Sheriff's Department...
PCU is working in collaboration with our DA's office to begin second-degree murder charges on these cases. And just to note that our detectives, our standalone SIU unit, has been successful in some of those cases in having narcotics dealers prosecuted. Additionally, the task force will also focus on illegal marijuana grows in residential and commercial areas as well as investigation of illegal sales of narcotics through medical practices. That concludes the information I could provide on the task force at this time. We're joining this task force, which is already in process and obviously some of the information I cannot release due to the nature of some of the ongoing investigations. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer those for you.
So in addition to that, I do want to note that the, there are, there are state legislation that is happening now that is pushing out Narcan to the public in various locations, the, also stepping up at the school level. So there is an active audience right now in order to deal with this issue, especially with regard to fentanyl, where it seems to be a drug of choice, at least at this point in time. But it's up to the council at this point if they would like to re-engage the task force. So I think at this point, we're available for any questions.
Well, I think it's important to have an educational component here as well. So I don't know where that would fit in, but you know how I feel about that.
Absolutely. And what we will do is collaborate with the Sheriff's Department on how they're going to push that out. We're new to joining this task force. When we were involved in it a few years ago, we were primarily focusing on doctors that were over-prescribing or prescribing opioids for illicit use. It's kind of transitioning now with the fentanyl epidemic. As you know, we had 30 overdoses in Simi Valley last year, 21 we believe were related to fentanyl. So what we're trying to do is lock arms together with all the other agencies and kind of tackle the problem together. My feeling is, in my discussions with the sheriff, that we're going to be real successful with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Just, I'm sorry, I don't have that button that says...
I know.
Cues us up. So thank you for, thank you for pivoting back and forth. I appreciate that. It was, I know that this is on the specific for conversation because I brought up a few, you know, last fall, a desire to possibly reactivate or at least have some meetings. I took the liberty of calling Pat Montoya and speaking with him, who is the head of Not One More, and I know he was actively involved and he was the one who approached me last fall, asking, "When can we meet again? There's just some discussion I think we should be having in the city." And so I reached out to him specifically to say, "This is going to be an agenda item tonight. What are your thoughts? There's a concern that there's duplicative efforts. We don't want to duplicate our time and energy, but you know, what are..." And so that was, and that was my discussion with him. I will, he had a commitment, otherwise he would be here tonight, but he was very, felt very strongly that, that there ought to be a local, maybe because of those 30 overdoses, but a local flashlight shining on exactly what Simi Valley can do specifically and an awareness. And of course, he's very involved in speaking in the schools, you mentioned education, et cetera, and that's all, that's all part of it. And maybe because I had to witness someone just a month ago sitting in a car who was overdosed and people trying to rouse him and the police being called to try to administer Narcan, maybe because in our, this is in Moore Park, I'd be specific about geography, but maybe because I witnessed that, I just realized it really is something that's affecting our community. A few questions I might ask and maybe because I really want to be sure we have the necessary services here in Simi Valley to help fight it. If we have, you're talking about basically, and I appreciate it, apprehending the criminals that are making this accessible, but obviously we have some of our community who are, have become addicts, et cetera, who are, who are users, et cetera. If someone wanted to go into detox, for instance, is there a facility in Simi Valley where you could call the county and, and those services are provided, they can immediately go in?
Well, I can't speak to what we have currently in terms of inpatient, but in terms of an ambulatory clinic or where people can come in and get services, yes, that does exist.
Because my experience in speaking and you, I know you have connections with our wonderful hospital too, but my impression is, is that if someone comes in there in need of detox or they're overdosing, et cetera, in need of continued services, it all is handled in the East Valley, that that's where they would go for, et cetera, for detoxing or for, or if they wanted to be in some kind of a inpatient rehab environment, et cetera, most, at least county support is on that side of the nine. And I'm wondering if we have some kind of a committee that shines light on some of that, maybe services needed, whether that we might get more services here. But one of the things that I did discuss with Pat is I do think the committee name is incorrect. I would, if we were to revive it, I would suggest a different name. I think heroin, as we know now, fentanyl is the drug of choice and there may be something else. I know he suggested maybe substance abuse, mental disorder committee or something, whatever at the leisure of this board, what we, what we think. But I see a need and I appreciate, in fact, we have our youth council here and they recognize the problem and that has become, and I don't think we should just leave it for our youth council entirely to fight the battle. They recognize that that's become an issue that they look at almost every year. And so I'm thinking that maybe we need to join in that fight, but that, those are my thoughts.
Well, I agree with that and here's why. That's why I brought up the educational component and I think that, I'm glad to see that we have a countywide task force going. I think that that's going to be more effective from the enforcement side, but from the educational side, I think that we really do need a driving force here within the community. It was really effective back when heroin first appeared, but you're right, it's not about heroin anymore. Fentanyl's coming in at unbelievable, I mean, if you knew the volume that it's coming into our community, it's, and it really is Russian roulette for these kids that are, you know, using it. So I think there is a value to having someone meet and try to see what we can do within the community to, because I don't, I just don't think there's such a thing as too much effort.
I agree. My recommendation is that, and certainly I've reached out to Ventura County Behavioral Health and Assistant City Manager Samantha Arkabright has also been reaching out to them. And what we need to do first is orient ourselves as to what's going on, on the countywide task force in terms of education and look, look at how that committee's doing, what resources they have and what's available. And once we have a good sense of what that is, then that, we might be able to come up with a better answer of whether we need or what we need here locally to be effective. So I'm, what we can do is gather some more information on that and figure out how do we fit into the countywide view of the, of the issue and then kind of drill into what fits here locally.
Would I always suggest, since there's a desire to continue to talk about it, we can follow with Chief Shorts as noted, we'll gather some information and bring it back to you for further discussion on, if you want to reconstitute it up, what that would look like.
Thank you.
The other item for the council's consideration is the Task Force on Homelessness. There was a recommendation from former Councilmember Lewvenos to change the name of the committee to the Task Force for the Unhoused. So we are bringing that item back to the council for your consideration.
My recommendation on the Task Force on Homelessness is to disband it. When you put together a task force, you call something a task force, the name, the title gives you expectations that something's going to be done. Well, Task Force on Homelessness does nothing to prevent homelessness, nothing to stop homelessness. What it does is it brings entities from the county and the city together so that they can basically discuss homelessness. We do not have a large homeless crisis in our city right now, like, like other cities in our county and over the hill do. The problem with this task force is it can be handled by the one staff person in the city that's, that's their actual job, is to coordinate the county's resources to make sure that the people that are affected by homelessness in our city get all the resources they're entitled to through the county and the state. That task force never did any of that. The city employee that handles that, working in conjunction with the Samaritan Center and other county entities, did that. So in other words, I think you could save a lot of staff time and other things by just letting the staff handle this the way they normally would, instead of having a task force manned by two council members that requires staff time and the ability to get all kinds of county entities together to do the meetings and things like that.
Was there greater awareness because the task force met? That, I mean, was there more coordination in any way between these entities?
No. They do their job and we just sat around and talked about it. That was it. You can look at, go back and look at the YouTube videos, you can look back when we had meetings in the room back there. Just wasn't, you know, I tried to do this about six years ago, but for some reason we didn't close it then and I really couldn't tell you why. But I'm telling you right now, it just wastes a lot of staff effort. Go back a little bit to the Task Force on Heroin Prevention. The biggest problem we have with that, overall biggest problem, was getting all of those entities together to meet. That was the biggest problem. Wasn't the fact that we didn't want to educate people on heroin or fentanyl or anything like that, it was the fact that you needed to get clergy, school board, park board, city council, all the county entities, all together in one room to talk about it for an hour and a half. That was the huge problem there. And again, a lot of staff time. So for the Task Force on Homelessness, and I've been on it ever since I've been on the council, I recommend we just close it. Let city staff handle it the way they normally would.
So a question to you then and Mr. Gable is, if we were to do that, what, what additional resources, if any, does that staff need and could we as a council be instrumental in helping bolster the efforts there? I like that we coordinate with the Samaritan Center. I like that we are participating as a city in dealing with the issue, but I think I'm also in agreement that a task force isn't what's necessary, but what, what holes can we fill without a task force?
Before you answer that question, Brian, Councilmember Rhodes and Council, Mayor Pro Tem Judge, I want to add that what's on the agenda today is appointment and representation of city council board members and also consideration of recommended changes. Maybe, might be, I might be a stickler here for the Brown app, but what's on the agenda is, as it relates to the Homelessness Task Force, is basically a name change. I think if you want to do away with it and close it out, I think we should agendize it for a future hearing, just so it's abundantly clear that that's what being, that is what is being agendized.
In that case...
Well, can we talk about it? And then bring it back for action? Talk about the committee?
You can talk about the committee.
Okay. So I think, Councilmember Rhodes, to your point, I don't think right now we need, I don't think there's any holes that need to be filled right now. Mayor Pro Tem Judge is correct, we have one staff member that is very, very engaged in working on, on this particular issue, but we also have several other staff members that are part of that process as well. There's a, there's a lot of effort going on now at the county level that I'm participating in that is working on regional solutions to homelessness. There is a lot of funding coming out of the state, although it's a little bit scattered shot right now, but I think right now there's, there are, there are opportunities that are coming about that, that staff is aware of and are working on. So I don't, I wouldn't say that there's any holes right now that need to be filled, but we'll certainly, if it becomes that point, we will not be shy about wanting to bring something back.
Well, and I would ask the question to Mike's point, maybe it's misnamed as a task force. Sometimes it can just be a homelessness committee. I mean, I, the value of having the conversation without, may be valuable, I don't know. You've served there, obviously, Mike, and I, I want to be sure that we are not perceived as not being concerned about that issue in our community, in our community. And so I just caution that way, but I, your point is well taken, Mike.
So to the question tonight of renaming it to Unhoused, Task Force for the Unhoused, I totally think that's appropriate. Based on my conversations with the Samaritan Center and the vocabulary that they use, that makes a, that's a reasonable ask and then maybe for a future agenda item, we decide whether we have to have that at all.
I agree with Councilmember Rhodes.
We can certainly bring an item back to discuss the Mayor Pro Tem Judge's point on the, the need to continue the committee and what would be on the agenda to accomplish for that committee. We'll bring something back on that as well.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that...
So I'm sorry, so did we come to a decision on changing the name or not? Or we're just leaving that aside?
We'll just bring that back all at the same time.
Thank you, okay.
With that, I will leave it to the council to discuss the committee assignments beginning on page five, five, six and seven. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rhodes, would you like to start, please?
Yeah, I have a suggestion for expediency on committee assignments, or at least a starting point. One, I think the Neighborhood Council assignments, as per staff recommendations, is good. Two, that Councilmember Rhodes, myself, assume all of the council appointments previously held by Councilwoman Lewvenos. Three, that the Mayor Thomas would assume all the positions held by Mayor Mashburn previously and that, four, Mayor Pro Tem Judge assume all of the Mayor Pro Tem positions. And then there is one exception that I would request in that and that I would like to sit on the Simi Valley Arts Commission instead of Mayor Thomas, as that would, in my previous thing, it would, it would fall to you.
I think we may need clarification though, on some of those, whether it's a Mayor Pro Tem thing or whether it was a Elaine Litster thing, or Councilmember Litster. I mean, I just want to be sure as we go, maybe we should go through and just confirm what that means.
So why don't we do that? We'll just go through the list. We can use that as a starting point, but...
Sure.
Then you can, each of you can have an opportunity to speak on each one if there's a, an issue on any of them. So we'll start with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee.
So Councilmember Rhodes would be added to that?
Yes.
So it would be Mike and, and Councilmember Rhodes and Councilmember Judge. Okay. Americans with Disability Act.
It could be anybody, but it was Mayor Mashburn most recently.
Doesn't, doesn't require the mayor to be there?
Yeah, but that's fine. I don't, yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay. Armed Forces Banner Advisory Committee.
We don't meet very often, but I'd like to stay on there.
I'm fine with staying unless somebody really wants it.
No, that's fine. Arroyo Simi Committee.
We did away with it.
I was really hoping I could help board put the park benches, but I guess I don't get to do that anymore.
Okay. Association of Water Agencies. I would like to do that.
Okay.
So, yeah. Clean Power Alliance.
Up until now, this is, I mean, it's been a Zoom meeting for the last two years, but prior to that, it was a drive to downtown Los Angeles for this meeting.
Yes.
Have at it.
So that would be Councilmember Rhodes?
And Mayor Thomas. I would be the alternate. I'm busy that day.
We do have staff attend that as well. That is, would, Sam, as an alternate, are you voting member? Okay, so we would have a voting member if neither one of you could, could attend.
All right, so who is going to be the primary?
Councilmember Rhodes is happy to be.
As written there. Okay, very good. Economic Development Collaborative.
Just as a side there, if you kick me off, you have to be the chair. Because I'm the chair as of the 19th.
Not doing it.
Because economic development is absolutely something I'm interested in, but if you're already engaged in that and the chair of that, I mean, then you should be there.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
I'll just include you in a lot of stuff, if you like.
I would love to, because I'd love to know what's going on with that.
Okay, perfect.
Government Committee? Mike?
Yeah. What is that?
Have we ever met?
It hasn't met since I've been on.
Okay, so, all right. League of California Cities Channel Island, Channel Counties Division. So Mike, you're it right now?
Yeah, I don't think we...
Friday evenings quarterly.
It hasn't met in a while. Yeah, the, the league is getting a little bit more active, perhaps I see in 23, there, there may be a meeting or two.
I have no problem staying unless somebody else would really like to do it. I'm fine.
All right, then, League of California Cities Voting Delegate.
That is usually the mayor, yes.
And I, and yeah.
I don't know why I'm the alternate, but it could be the Mayor Pro Tem if you want for the alternate.
This is, the Voting Delegate is, when we go to the League of Cities Conference, usually in October.
Yes.
We can all go, the whole council can go, because there are great things that happen and you can go to breakout sessions, you learn a lot of information, but at the end you have to vote on whatever the league decides it's going to do for its agenda.
Hmm, okay.
That would be the Voting Delegate's job. So if the mayor can't make it, we need an alternate. If the mayor could be there, then we don't need an alternate.
Right.
I would recommend selecting an alternate.
Mayor Pro Tem?
It's fine with me.
Okay.
I usually, I'm usually going with this.
All right, good. Murphy Estate Property Agency.
Do we still need that?
Well, actually, we do.
Okay.
And that is, that would be the mayor.
Okay.
And there is, there is some money to be allocated out.
Okay, cool.
Okay, great. Okay, great. Joint Council, that's a given.
That's the mayor.
Neighborhood councils, we haven't even agreed on that.
Yes.
Emily tells us where to go.
Regional Defense Partnership for the 21st Century.
Yep. RDP 21 was formed to protect Naval Base Ventura County from being closed.
Closed.
And so its, its job is to maintain that status of the naval base. And since, I think Keith's been, the mayor's been the representative for about the last six years.
Well, I grew up on that naval base, so I'm all about that.
Perfect. You know how to get there.
Yeah. Residential Building Permit Allocation System Technical Advisory Committee.
Is that what?
Wow.
That's what we just got rid of.
We just got rid of that one.
Good. Simi Valley Arts Commission.
I definitely want to remain on that commission, if that's all right. I understand that Councilmember Rhodes would like to join.
Which I'm fine with that. So, all right. Great. Simi Valley Council on Aging.
Yes, I have no problem staying unless somebody really wants to do it.
I, I've enjoyed being the alternate. Mike and I have enjoyed attending the meetings monthly, but I too would, yeah.
Great. We're going to table the task force on heroin for now, right?
What about the tourism? Did I, oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me, you're right. Apologies.
Simi Valley Tourism Alliance. Well, I'm fine with that, unless somebody really wants to do it.
If you ever need an alternate, I'm happy to step in for you. But I, I just think that there's a lot that can be done.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm interested in, in that.
So...
Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG.
Same kind of thing as the League of Cities.
Yeah.
SCAG meets for their conference in May, and we usually go, and we learn stuff, and we have to vote on their, whatever they're going to do.
And I'm not quite sure why Ruth is listed, what, maybe so. I know that I was the voting delegate last year.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure what...
We usually do the voting delegate by the rank of whoever's there. Like, if the mayor's there, he's going to be the voting delegate.
Right, and he...
So on and so forth.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And we, I think we have to come, we have to come back with a resolution on that also.
Yes, about, sometime about September or August, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, all right. Homelessness.
And that's going to come back.
Come back, all right. Ventura Council of Governments? ECOG?
I would very much like to stay there, if that's all right. I'm serving on their administrative committee and, anyway, yeah.
I'm fine being there.
If that's all right.
Okay. Ventura County Animal Services.
I'd like to stay on that.
Okay. Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance.
I'm fine staying on there, and like I said, it's going to be the, the normal speech unless somebody else really wants to do it. Like I said, it's been Zoom meetings since I've been assigned to it, so I'm sure when that stops, we'll have to find someplace to go.
Okay. All right, I'm fine as an alternate.
Okay.
Yeah. Ventura County Transportation Commission.
I would like to stay on that one.
Yeah. Okay. Youth Council Liaison. I guess there's two people?
So it was, correct. And the mayor and I were both the liaisons. I'm, I'm happy to stay there, but I, I don't want to be selfish and take all the fun stuff, so, but, but there does need to be a second there as well.
Yeah. Well, I'm interested, does anyone else?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, all right.
And the balance of them, Mr. Mayor, are all Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, okay, perfect.
Okay.
All right, so then, I guess we're going to need a motion on that or not?
Yes, on page four.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I've moved to appoint City Council members to boards, commissions, and committees discussed by the City Council and approve the modifications to certain bodies, as also discussed by the City Council.
Second?
Call for a vote?
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Litster?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh? Mayor Pro Tem Judge?
Yes.
Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 3C1, informational presentation by Youth Councilmember Ella McCrossan.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council. My name is Ella McCrossan. I'm currently a junior at Royal High School. This is my fourth term serving on the Simi Valley Youth Council and my second term serving as secretary. It's my pleasure to be with you tonight to give you an update on the Youth Council's recent meetings alongside our upcoming activities that we're planning. On November 15th, we had the privilege of hosting our Youth Council meeting at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute. The focus of the meeting was to audition for speaking roles for our Youth Town Hall, which will be held on January 20th. All members who were interested in being an introductory speaker, panel moderator, audience engagement team member, or social media correspondent, had the opportunity to speak in front of the staff from the Ronald Reagan Foundation Education Foundation and Institute alongside our own Youth Council Coordinator, Kristin Tiggnak, who then decided on the role assignments. At this time, we have 475 middle and high school students registered to attend.
Wow.
The panel discussion topic is social media and its impact on mental health. We are excited to announce that we have three amazing panelists to speak on the topic. Our panelists include Mark Berkman, the CEO of the Organization for Social Media Safety, Dr. Clive O, a professor of public relations at Pepperdine University, and Ms. Serena Nguyen, a licensed social worker for Simi Valley Unified School District. Middle and high school students may still register to attend this event at reaganfoundation.org/programs/events and select Youth Town Hall. Last month, we also made some important decisions regarding our Youth Summit, which is scheduled on March 10th, a Friday. The Youth Summit online application is now open as well at simivalley.org/youthsummit. The theme we selected is reconnect to reality. All Youth Council members are very excited for this event, and we recommend that all high school students sign up. Our last meeting of 2022 was held on December 20th. The meeting started on a high note. We were discussing the generous donations we received from the Ventura County Leadership Academy. We were selected as one of 10 organizations in the county for the VCLA's Community Holiday Drive. We received materials to use in leading Youth Summit breakout groups, along with a 4K video camera for filming social media content. They are also helping us to find a motivational speaker for our Youth Summit, which is our biggest expense. We ended 2022 with some fun holiday activities, including a Secret Santa gift exchange and a gingerbread house building competition. We also met over holiday break at the Rancho Tappo Community Park, also known as Lemon Park, to hide the remainder of our rocks from our suicide prevention rock painting night and to play a friendly game of basketball. It was very nice to end the year having fun altogether. As we begin 2023, the Youth Council has a busy few months coming up. As I mentioned before, on January 20th, we will be holding our Youth Town Hall on the topic of social media at the Ronald Reagan Presidential Foundation and Institute. The Youth Town Hall is an amazing forum for youth in our community to hear from professionals and ask them questions on a topic that affects all of us. Applications are also open for our annual Youth Summit on March 10th. Any ninth through 12th grade students can attend by signing up at www.simi valley.org/youthsummit. And as someone who has attended this event before, I strongly encourage anyone to do so. It is an amazing opportunity for students to voice their own concerns on issues that they see in the city, and it exercises the important skill of problem solving. Additionally, we will be holding our annual talent show on Thursday, April 6th, so make sure you save the date. If you want to stay updated on the activities of the Youth Council, I highly recommend that you follow us at Simi Valley Youth Council on Instagram, Facebook, and YouTube. We post updates on our upcoming events, as well as original content made by our own social media committee. As Chair of the Social Media Committee, I am very excited to tell you all that our Instagram account recently hit 1,000 followers. We hope to continue growing our social media presence in order to reach as many people in the community as possible. Once again, thank you, Mayor Thomas and members of the City Council for having me tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Well, thank you very much. I look forward to actually attending your events.
And I look forward to having you.
And go Highlanders.
And Ella's been very modest, but as the Chair of that committee, she may have single-handedly made that hit 1,000 on her own, so. She has a good committee, but well done, Ella.
Thank you.
So just, just to go back, though, the, the next upcoming event is January 20th, a Friday.
Yes.
And, and you, did you really say you have 475 people already?
We do.
That is, is that a record, or is that...
I believe so. It is definitely more than we've had in recent years, but we're... Yes, it's more than we've had in the past couple of years, and we're very excited.
That's huge. Well, congratulations and good luck. And, and we are all invited to attend that, I believe.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, the next item on the agenda is Item 4, Public Statements. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, since there are no public hearings this evening under Agenda Item 5, Agenda Item 4 and 6 are combined, and the City Council will hear all public statements under this Agenda Item 4. Agenda Item Number 4 and Agenda Item Number 6 are all time allotted for public statements on all items other than public hearings, appointments, and informational reports. Speakers will be called on, called on in the order in which our card was submitted, to speak for this Public Statements Item 4, for a period of no more than three minutes each. Persons addressing the City Council are requested to state their name and community residence for the record. Mr. Mayor, unless you have any other comments, we can begin public statements. Thank you. The first speaker is Nikki Leann.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Sorry. My name is Nikki Leann. I am a co-owner of Body Brain Train here in Simi Valley. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that helps bring fitness and wellness into the Simi Valley senior community. There are approximately 19,000 seniors and over 60 senior living facilities here in Simi Valley. Our mission is to make sure that every single senior knows they have us as a resource to lean on, to help them thrive and live with their best quality of life. In the short year we've been active, we've been able to form relationships and teach at senior living facilities such as Varanita, Sunrise, Vista, as well as others, and bring our program to their tenants. We work with the Simi Valley Senior Center. We currently teach free exercises at their facility. We collected stocking sufferers for the community this past holiday, and were able to distribute 160 gifts through the Senior Center's Meals on Wheels program. We had our members perform at the Senior Center Variety Show, which inspired new seniors to join our program. We currently offer four free senior classes per week at our storefront here in Simi Valley, which includes box and balance, young shin fitness, cardio drumming, as well as circuit training, weight training, and other exercises to incorporate cognitive exercise. We run several free senior sociales out of our facility in the past year, and working with the Senior Service Alliance of the Chamber of Commerce, we will continue to run these programs every other month, working with small businesses in the community. About 80% of our members are people fighting with Parkinson's disease. Our first Parkinson's support group, and the only one in Simi Valley, currently is scheduled for February 4th. All of our work is donation-based, and it is through my, the work of my partner Gabby and myself, with a few other wonderful volunteers, as well as the support of our community that keeps us running. Tonight, we are asking for you to consider increasing the amount allotted to us through the Simi Valley Event Grant Fund. I love and respect all the nonprofits that were awarded the money and ask for, they asked for, such as the Chamber of Commerce and the Kiwanis Club. As a member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber, I know they do wonderful things and reach a lot of people. This is exactly what we are trying to do for the senior community. As lovely as the street fair and the fireworks show are in here in Simi Valley, these events will go on anyway, with or without this funding. We need those funds to start raising money, bigger funds to maintain our current program and to continue to reach out and help more seniors in this community. Please consider increasing the proposed funding for Body Brain Train. Thank you so much for your time.
Jenny Allen?
My name is Jenny Allen. I live in Simi Valley. I'm speaking in support of Body Brain Train. I've known Nikki Leann for many years, and she has always gone above and beyond for our community in all aspects. Body Brain Train, her new nonprofit, serving our senior community and those specifically with Parkinson's and other disabilities, is a huge asset to our community. They should be granted additional funding so they can positively impact more seniors. I've been an active volunteer since July. The improvements that I have seen with the seniors that I work with has been, they've been astronomical. I've watched individuals grow in confidence. I've watched them improve their mobility, strength. The joy that I see on some of these seniors' faces, who previously could not do a simple task, such as picking something up off the floor, and now they can, that's worth something. Seniors are kickboxing, they're doing young shin, they're moving meditation, they're doing weight training, the list goes on and on. The program is so important to our senior community for both their health physically and mentally. No longer should our older community, which is a growing demographic, be relegated to rocking chairs and knitting. We have an opportunity to add more quality to their lives. I urge you to make the correct decision in giving Body Brain Train additional funding so that they can make a positive difference in the lives of these people, that they absolutely can. Aging is not a loss of youth, it's a new opportunity for strength and optimum health. Thank you for your time.
Don Cobalt?
Hi, my name's Don Cobalt. I've lived in Simi Valley since the 70s. I'm speaking on behalf of Body Brain Train. I was at the last recommendation of funds for the events, and I was very surprised that the bigger organizations, that the events will still happen, got most of the money, and the smaller nonprofits did not. And the fireworks and the Smile Fair and the Street Fair, they're great events, and there's big impact. I get that, I understand that. It serves a lot of people in one day and creates great memories. But if we don't have nonprofits like Body Brain Train that help these seniors get out of bed, get out of the house, and become mobile, they can't attend those events. So we're excluding them from the big events that are traditions here in Simi. So we're just asking if you can reallocate some funds and help the small nonprofits, such as Body Brain Train, make a lasting and bigger impact than a one-day event. This is changing lives. People that can't get out of bed cannot get out of bed, which means it doesn't just affect them, it affects their families and the caregivers that are around them. So we want all these people to go to the big events that make Simi Valley Simi, but they need funds so they can fundraise to stay in business, to make a larger impact through the senior community of Simi Valley. Thank you.
Frank Tomlinson?
Thanks for the time. Live in Simi, have, grew up, I've lived right up the street before any of these buildings were built. Love this place, and it's unique. What Body Brain Train is doing is excessively unique, and I think that the 9,000 people that Nikki had probably spoken to, that live in this town, that are seniors now, is probably well understated. I can't corroborate that, but, I mean, if I look around, it's a growing, it's a growing demographic in our community, two of which my parents are, are a part of. I have seen them flourish. My dad, today, when I was over at his apartment, first thing out of his mouth, hey, we going to work out tomorrow? Yeah, going to work out, Pop. He looks forward to it, something for him to look forward to. I've seen my folks get sedentary, they don't have things to invest themselves in, this is one of the things. I mean, this is so unique, I've never heard of anything like this. For a private nonprofit to offer something like this to the community, it's just true. And everything that Nikki and Don have spoken to is true as well. These other things, they're, they're so worthwhile. I, I go to them all. I attend all the things in this city. This is something that my parents don't, a lot of the, of the folks that are my parents' age are on fixed incomes. For them to be able to support themselves based on people on fixed incomes to, to come and give money to keep them open and doing what they're doing, really isn't going to happen. Fundraising has to happen for them. So I, along with them, am going to ask you guys to, to shift around funds. It's difficult, there's only a limited amount. But that you guys will see the impact that these, these amazing ladies are making on this community is going to last for a long time. Yeah, I'll probably be there, too. Save my thought.
Julie Burschen.
Hi, my name is Julie Burschen. I am the Chair for Neighborhood Council Number 3. So I volunteered to be a part of this board and I was nominated Chair for this event board. And we had a huge amount of applicants. I was told that there's usually six or seven. In the last go-round, we had 12. As you have heard, it was Body Brain Train and 11 others. The problem was, we had $25,000, but there was a $71,000-plus of monies to be asked for. So we really had the impossible task of to whom we allocate these funds to. So I am on, out here requesting to increase this amount of funding for these nonprofits. And there are a lot of things that we were looking for and we did preference funding for the events for local Simi residences and who the money could benefit the most. But I do agree that this was an impossible task. And I've heard people in the past talk about it, but we now had 12 nonprofits. So yes, we did allocate the money to where we thought would hit the greatest amount of people. So when you look at the, the importance of, you know, health, physical health, I agree that there could have been more money. So please, for the people that serve on this board, we could have had a bigger amount of money granted to this event for the nonprofits. Thank you.
Debbie Jen.
I have had Parkinson's for 16 years. And something that, that she does for all of us with Parkinson's, we do, we, we, we keep moving because we can go to all her programs. We can go to the regular classes too. And so it's very beneficial to us with Parkinson's. It's the only thing in Simi Valley or more parks. So please support Body Brain Train.
Joe Pachowski.
Good evening, Mayor Thomas, members of the City Council. It's nice to talk to you guys without a plastic thing in front of me. I'm here tonight because like Julie Burschen a moment ago, I also had the, had the opportunity to serve this, serve our city as, as a member of the, of the Special Event Support Review Committee. And, and I agree with Julie's assessment. We had the nearly impossible task of allocating $25,000 to organizations, which were all worthy. The only two organizations we didn't recommend were organizations that were serving communities outside of Simi Valley in addition to serving Simi Valley. We could have easily allocated 50,000 without blinking an eye and still not been able to give everybody everything that they were requesting. I know the money comes out of the general fund and there's not a whole lot of money that, that may be available in the general fund to increase the amount in future years. But this, the $25,000 amount that we were asked to allocate has stayed the same since 2014. And at the very least, the last two years, we've seen a pretty big spike in terms of cost and inflation and everything else. And so if there's any general fund money available to increase this amount in the future, I want to echo what Julie said and ask that the council consider that in, as the budget comes up for approval for the, for the next fiscal year. As far as this fiscal year goes, I don't know, don't know if there's any money available. I'll leave that to, to City Manager Gabler and the council to decide. But we had a very difficult choice and we made sure that everybody got something. And, and so that's kind of what I've, what I wanted to let you all know tonight. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Mayor, that was the last speaker this evening. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 4A, City Council Comments Regarding Public Statements.
Do you have any comments? Councilmember Rhodes.
Here, is that appropriate this time? Or is that when we get to?
Probably better when we get to the item.
Got it.
Yep.
Okay. So my comment is, my comments are, Nikki and your team, fantastic work. And we all know that you're incredibly valuable part of the community and you're doing phenomenal stuff. Thank you for everybody that came out and spoke on their behalf. The campaign to increase the funding was well-organized, comprehensive, and, and we heard you. Ms. Burschen, Mr. Pachowski, thankless task to try and take $25,000 and spread it over $71,000 worth of requests. That's a difficult thing to do and it's hard to say no. And so when we get to the item to discuss it, we're going to see what we can do in making that a level playing field. But thank you all for coming out and speaking.
Councilmember Litster, I know you had something.
Either one, one of these buttons, thank you. Actually, I think that Councilmember Rhodes was very articulate in what I would have expressed as well. Thank you to all and so appreciate your efforts and what's going on in Simi Valley. And, and thank you to the committee. Thank you to Ms. Burschan and Joe, Mr. Pachowski for serving there. That is so hard. Yes, we will be discussing more, won't we? But anyway, thank you again for all. And I was actually going to say, thank you for braving the rain and the wet. I mean, that is above and beyond to be here tonight. So, thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
I'll just reiterate again, everything that Rocky said and Councilmember Litster here have both did a great job. It was very nice of you to all come out here. I know Nikki, you were here once before with Body Brain Train and did a great, great opportunity at that time. It was nice to hear somebody who's actually receiving some of the services that you provide, nonprofit. And yes, Joe and Julie, that was a thankless job. Just looking at what you guys ended up doing, I was like, oh my gosh. That's why we developed a committee to do it. See, so we're, we're, we're pretty smart up here, right? But again, that is, every year I see it and it's difficult, but we're having more and more nonprofits apply. And so I, I know you guys had a thankless job, but you did a great, you did as well as you could. And I think additional funding might be in the future. Count the city manager's hiding, but we'll, we'll see what he says. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out and thank Body Brain Train for all the work that you do. I did get all the emails. I did read all of them. I tried to respond to all of them. Hope I did. I might have missed the ones that came in today. But again, thank you for the hard work you're doing. I'm very sorry there's not much more money in there, but you know, and I don't know what to tell you. We're working on it. And again, like the other councilperson said, that's why we have a committee. Because people up here like to play politics with those types of things sometimes, so it's better to have a committee take care of that than have it done up here. Again, thank you for coming out and speaking though.
And I want to thank you for the effort you put into, you know, contacting us and letting us know about your organization. We'll see how, you know, the decision goes tonight, but I, I do know that I'm interested in learning more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 7, the Consent Calendar, and there are no resolutions this evening for your consideration.
May I make a motion, Mr. Mayor? I, I move to approve consent, the consent calendar, Items 1 and 2.
Second.
Call of the vote.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Litster?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Judge?
Yes.
And Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is Item 9A, Selection of Recipients to Receive the 2023 Special Event Support Grants and Authorize City Manager to Execute Contracts with Recipients. Heidi Dardo is here to present this item.
Hello again. In 2014, the City Council adopted a policy for city support of special events and an associated grant program, budgeting $25,000 from the general fund each year. City Council awards these funds to organizations who meet specific qualifications, such as being recognized by the IRS as a nonprofit, who have a Board of Directors with meetings open to the public, and have agreed to provide a report to the city describing how the proceeds from the event were distributed. In accordance with the policy for city support, funding recommendations are provided by a Special Event Support Review Committee, appointed annually consisting of one representative from each of the four neighborhood councils and one representative from the Council on Aging. Since inception of this program, the city averages seven requests for funding each year and every applicant has received some kind of funding each year. In 2019, the city was to award six applicants with funding for special events held in 2020, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, there was only one special event grant provided before the state mandated shutdown. In 2021, the Special Event Support Program was suspended due to the continuance of the pandemic. This year, due to increased outreach to prior special event applicants, social media posts, and a press release, the city received 12 applications requesting $71,669 in special event support. The Special Event Support Review Committee met on December 14, 2022 to review the 12 applications received. After hearing presentations from the applicants and public statements, the committee recommended that City Council consider funding for 10 of the 12 nonprofits. The committee was directed to incorporate preferences based on preference to fund events where proceeds are used locally within Simi Valley and preference to fund events with greater community public benefits over events with lesser community public benefits. The slide provided here lists the 12 applicants, the name of their proposed special event, the requested amount of support by the applicant, and the recommended amount by the committee. It is recommended that the City Council provide direction as to how to proceed with the committee's recommendations and staff is available if you have any questions.
I do have questions.
Go ahead.
As you articulated, 2019, there was, 25,000 was budgeted. How much was spent?
Actually, there was, we had 25,000, but due to a $3,500 carryover from the year prior, there was 28,500 awarded. But the only event that took place in 2020 was the Kiwanis Club of Simi Valley Roundup that occurred before.
So the other funds were held in escrow.
We did not, yeah, escrow, sure, city manager. We did not carry forward those funds.
So they were not awarded, they were not carried forward.
Well, at the time.
But might be considered part of that surplus. I don't know.
That's nice. At the time that the funds were not used, mind you, it was COVID. We didn't know in a fiscal year of March that it would continue, followed into the following year. So there were no special event grants.
Got it, got it.
We were taking a conservative approach.
That makes sense. That makes sense. Okay. So that was 2019.
Yeah, it's confusing. The grants are issued in 2019 for events that occurred the following year.
For 2020. There were two that occurred in two, so that was issued. And so those who were awarded those grants.
Didn't hold any special events.
They didn't hold any special, and it was only for that particular year, so it's not that they would be able to hold the same event and, and lay claim to those funds in a.
That is correct. If we issued funds to an applicant and for some reason they were unable to have the event that year, they would need to give the check back to the city, basically.
Got it. Okay. The reason I'm asking these questions is because it would appear that maybe the lack of those awards went back into our general fund in essence. Maybe there's some discretion, maybe, to, I don't know, possibly retract, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud. Scoop out, retract some of those ones. I don't, I'm just, it's just a, a discussion. So, and, and just to be clear, in, in the budget, was anything budgeted? Because we weren't sure when COVID was going to end, obviously. In 20, so that was 2019. In 2020, was there any budget made for this $25,000?
In 2020.
For 2021?
We did not. We suspended it that year.
It was budgeted, but the money wasn't allocated.
Right.
So it's an escrow.
You could say that.
I've got my banker next to me. Okay, so that, and then, okay. And let me take it the year after that. In 2021, which would be for the, the year that just occurred.
Correct.
Was there money that was budgeted?
There was not.
Okay.
It would have been budgeted, but unspent.
Budgeted but unspent?
Yes.
Okay.
Every, every year we continue to budget for it.
The budget that we passed allocated funds for this event that was never used.
That's correct.
Okay. I, I just want to make that clear to this council as we have this discussion. Okay. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, Heidi. That's it for now. I just wanted to ask those questions. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
The two organizations that were not allocated any funding. I wanted to get a little more clarity on those two. Mr. Pachowski just said they're, they're serving people within and outside of Simi Valley. And I think an argument could be made on, on many of these organizations on that way. Were there any other deficiencies in their application or deficiencies in their organization?
No. To be honest, I see where you're coming from with many of the organizations being international. The two organizations that did not receive a recommend, a recommendation of funding were G.G. Fit as well as For the Need. For the Need offered a brochure showing international support, if you will, with an event that had, with an event proposed that was about 100 students, if I'm not mistaken. Look at the application. G.G. Fit's Playhouse is a new Down Syndrome organization that is coming to Simi Valley. They're currently in the Free Clinic, I believe, in their structure at this time. But they're going to be in their own brick and mortar area, if you will, serving Down Syndrome children in particular. So because they're new, there was not a lot of examples, if you will, of a large community benefit. Both those organizations with their events showing a lower number of serving, which is I think what happened with Body Brain Train. This is just my perception. Because the credential of focusing on a large number of the community has been the preference directed by City Council. So we made that pretty clear.
Excellent. Thank you for that. For my staff or city manager, there, there's a couple of organizations on the list that get support for the funding, from the city for funding. And I'm okay if the city wants to buy a service, buy a sponsorship, get something out of it. I'm not actually, I donate personally a lot of money to different charities and nonprofits. I'm not a huge fan of taking tax dollars and redistributing them from the city. I think that nonprofits, one of their, their charters is to raise money and find ways to become self-sufficient. That being said, there's a couple of organizations on the list that, that I had some thoughts about. The city has a contract with the Chamber of Commerce.
That's correct.
That's right. And so it's my understanding that we, we contract for services with them to the. to the tune of about $70,000 a year, and I'm, I'm completely happy with that. I believe that we get what we pay for from them. They've also got the street fair, which if we are going to go and participate in as a city, we're going to pay our way to, to be in there, and so I'm, I'm not sure the justification in my mind of the $5,000 spread out over two street fairs on what benefit to the larger city is on that, that event. Also, I was with the, or I am with the Rotary Club of Simi Valley, which for decades put on the fireworks show, and know how difficult it is to put on that show. One of the reasons we stopped doing it is because it was so difficult. But the city is already ponying up $20,000 towards getting that event underway, and.
Twenty.
And then the Parks Department puts in another.
Like amount, twenty, yes.
Yeah, and so depositing more money in, in that account, at some point, they just say, hey, instead of giving us 20, give us 25, or, or make a case for, for that. It is a difficult event to put on and difficult to, to turn a, quote, profit on that, to, to get some money for your organization at the end. So with, with those thoughts, I, I do have some idea of reallocating some of the funds. I'll wait for like future, or the other council discussions. I don't know that I'm a huge fan of increasing the, the pool of money to distribute.
Just want to add real quickly, I just want to clarify, you're not actually a member of the Rotary Club of Simi Valley Sunrise?
No.
Okay.
We belong to the Rotary Club of Simi Valley. The noon time. Mr. Mayor, may I make some comments? Thank you.
Yes.
I think we have some great ideas both ways. I am in favor of increasing it, especially since we didn't spend it the last three years, so that's something that we can discuss. I also, in looking at this, I know it's difficult, you guys did a great job, but my first concern was duplicating. So we're giving Kiwanis Club two things, we're giving the Chamber two things, and I'd really rather see it spread out a little bit more. I, I do like Gigi's House, I know that's a, they're, they're trying to come here to Simi Valley, and so there, it's going to take them a while to, to build up to what they want to do. One of my managers has a six-year-old Down Syndrome little girl, and she belongs to Gigi's House where she lives. And then Share the Ride, Soaring Spirits International, that's also an international organization, so I don't know, they kind of fit in.
But it's housed here in Simi Valley.
They are housed here, but so is Gigi's House, so is For the Need, so I, I mean, $1,000, I'm fine, you know, leaving it like that. They do have their ride every year, and they, they provide a good service here also. But I, I think I'm concerned with the duplicate payments to, to some of the same organizations. I agree with Councilmember Rhodes, the Star Spangled Jam and Fireworks Special. I also belong to that club and did, we did that for 25 years. I counted money 25 years doing that thing. So it, it is hard, so I appreciate Kiwanis Club and all they do for us. They do a lot of great things. But again, I think that's, they're getting a total of $9,000, and Chamber's getting 5,000, which isn't quite as bad, because we, we split it at least in half, but I think maybe we should look at the duplicates a little bit. That would be just be my opinion.
Well, I do have a conflict that I just realized, because I am a member of Rotary Club of Simi Sunrise, so I can't comment on that item.
I concur.
Does he, I don't want him off his vote, but does he have to abstain from the discussion? I recall that you caused me to abstain from the whole discussion when. That's what you had me do last time.
Caution, we should probably do that then.
Okay.
So just for this item, you'll have to recuse yourself from this moment forward, and I'll call you back when we're done.
Sorry, Mayor.
Night of firsts.
Okay, we now have our vice.
All right. Those are the comments.
If the, if the council would like to redistribute the funds, they certainly can. That is an option that's available to you. I will say, I, I've heard the discussion, if you did want to increase the amount, we would have to come back, because it is, if you look on page five of the staff report, it is a policy where the council established a funding amount of 25,000. We'd have to come back with another item to increase that amount.
Even though, even though, I mean, let me play devil's advocate, even though the, the council already approved 25,000 two or three times in a row for, budgeted it.
I think it's approved as a city policy.
Yeah, it's a policy of 25,000 per year, per fiscal year. So if you wanted to increase that amount, we'd have to bring that back.
Much cleaner to do so.
Not saying we can't increase, we just have to do it under a 10B item.
That's what I would recommend.
Another agenda item.
Okay.
Or you, yes, or you can just direct us to increase the amount. During this discussion, you can say, city manager, I'd like to increase the amount by, I'd like to double the amount to next year's budget, and suddenly it gets done. So that's another way you could.
That would be for next year's, not this one.
That's correct.
To do this year's, we would have to go 10B.
We'd have to come back with a whole nother item. Or you can keep the, keep the $25,000 as it is, and you can redistribute the money however you'd like.
Well, I was very intrigued by Councilmember Rhodes' statement about the, especially about the Fourth of July, and I love the fact that the Kiwanis Club is looking to take that on and do it this year, but I would, I would rather see them get, and a larger allotment in the, from the 20 grand that they get for the fireworks show, instead of trying to take the money from the smaller nonprofits here, or, or we could probably do that at a later date, too, right?
We can figure that out. We can, we can probably figure that out without having to come back.
And just, you know, help me out here, I think the Chamber of Commerce makes money on both the street fairs? Okay. But I am not a fan, I'm gonna say right now, I'm not a fan of renegotiating these funds up here on the dais. It's not something I really want to look forward to doing, but if the council is willing, is, is, you know, wants to do that, how do we do that?
So let me maybe make a, maybe make a suggestion.
You can just redistribute it.
Based on what you're, what you're suggesting, Councilmember Judge, your point is that 5,000 was taken, is, is part of the Star Spangled Jam Fireworks Special. That 5,000, because we have a contract with them as a city to do that event, we could approach, we could find, we could re, we could discuss that contract and possibly give them 5,000 more directly through the contract, not through this particular entity. If that is the case, what if we took their 5,000 and basically gave maybe 1,000 to Gigi, 1,000 to For the Need, and then 3,000 to Body Brain Train?
Is that a motion?
Um, I.
Do you want to discuss?
I'm happy to make that a motion unless there's a desire for discussion.
I'll second, and then we can discuss.
Okay, because I had a, a similar but different reallocation in mind that, that I would like to discuss as well. And it wasn't just the 5,000 from the fireworks show, but the 5,000 for the Chamber of Commerce as well, that then would end up reallocating $10,000. And my thought was to, for Gigi's Playhouse and For the Need, the two that were at zero, redistributing 1,500 to each of those, and then $1,000 additional to all of the remaining organizations up there. So everyone would receive an additional $1,000, and then Gigi's Playhouse and For the Need would get $1,500 each. So it's still in sort of the spirit of what the committee came forward with, which is try and give a little bit to everybody, and it's just redistributing the, the money from those organizations that I think could get money in different, different ways.
Now, at the council's pleasure, if you like that motion better than, than Councilmember Lane, uh, Whistler's motion, withdraw your motion, and then second Rocky's motion, and we can vote on that.
Let me just make sure I got that, Councilmember Rhodes.
I'm not.
For the Need Foundation would get 1,500, Gigi's Playhouse would get 1,500.
Right.
The Star Spangled Jam would get zero, two Chamber of Commerce would get zero, everything else would get 1,000 more.
Correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Help me understand the ration, the, and I need to go, go back and read their application. The, the request from this, from the Chamber of Commerce was specifically to provide, was it security, what was?
Is it their security?
Is it their security, is that what it?
Is it for the police?
I don't know that it had a specification.
For the street fair?
I'm looking at the.
The monopечical order.
So K-Rail placements, city traffic plan adherence, police services, event signage.
Got it. Or duplicate, yes, K-Rail, city traffic plan adherence, police services probably being the highest cost, event signage, staging and promotion, cleanup and tear down of the event.
And your thoughts are that because they charge, that you think they are, it's a, that they make money at that event, and so it's not needed, is that your?
I think that that, yes, that would be my, my take on it.
I prefer the first motion, so.
Okay. Just don't make it. Okay, so we'll stick with the first motion then, have a motion and a second on the floor. Please call for a vote.
Is the motion clear?
Let me just clarify, so it's, um. So the Chamber of Commerce, you would.
It would, it remains the same.
Okay.
It's 5,000 from the fireworks is gone.
Okay, it's 5,000 from fireworks, 3,000 more to Body Brain Train, 1,000 to For the Need Foundation, 1,000 to Gigi's Playhouse.
That was my initial.
Okay, call for the vote, please.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yes.
Councilmember Littster?
Yes.
Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Judge?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
And we.
Fred, you can come back then.
Staff understands the council's desire on the fireworks.
Please.
And can accommodate that in current budget.
That, that's, yes.
No further action necessary.
Great, thank you, okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, next on the agenda is item 10A, City Council Member Reports.
Councilmember Rhodes. Since our last meeting on 12/13, I attended via Zoom the Chamber Economic Development Committee meeting. That same day, immediately after, I was on a Zoom call representing the city on something that they did, which was a welcome to a city, or to a company moving into the city. It was four walls, and they are going to be taking over 135,000 square foot building. The executives attending were super happy to hear from the city and the school district and the chamber, and I think it, that we should extend more opportunities or offer more opportunities with the chamber and other folks to do that. It makes the, the companies moving in feel extra special about making their decision. On the 14th, I went to the Youth Employment Services Meeting, to unfortunately step down. It was a, a committee I've served on for a while, but I can't serve on both the council and that committee, but I look forward to seeing what their, with their successes. Also on the 14th, I attended the city staff lunch truck, where I stood in the line with my back to the food truck and greeted people, and I've learned a whole bunch of names and a whole bunch of faces, and I don't know that I'll put them all back together again, but it was really interesting to hear the diversity of job descriptions that there are in our city that I, I had no idea. On the 15th, I attended the Retirement of Chief Livingstone, also on the 15th, the swearing in of three new officers. On the 16th, I had a meeting with the mayor and with Assemblywoman Irwin as sort of a, getting to know each other coffee, which is nice to, to put names with a face and start that relationship. On the 18th, I went to the first candle lighting up at the Simi Valley Town Center by Habada Simi Valley in the Hanukkah celebration. I felt out of my element, but I learned a lot. They took me under their wing and explained all of the proceedings of what was going on, and I, and I grew as a person. On the 4th, I had a meeting here with staff to understand the financials that we get every month. I have a small business, and my balance sheet's really easy. The city is a little more complicated, and, and the staff was fantastic, and they, they showed me how everything connected. I really appreciated that. On the 4th, I attended to watch the Planning Commission meeting, and, and that went well. And on, also on the 4th, I attended the Park Board meeting, and they had the Arroyo item come up. They also had an item about the Equestrian Center come up, and, and I think that we should keep an eye out for any ways that we can assist in grant funding if there's some way to find, help them find some money or corroborate or collaborate like we did on the Arroyo Project with the Equestrian Center. I think that'd be a cool thing, and that is my report, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Littster.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. I will begin on December 14, which is when I chaired the Simi Valley Cultural Arts Commission meeting. It was really a, a good meeting in that, well, the gist, I mean, certainly we discussed events coming up and what, and the great projects that are happening there, but specifically we spent some time writing or reviewing the bylaws and, and, and basically the marching orders of that commission, which has kind of been not articulated. It's just been generally understood, but there actually haven't been necessarily written, I guess, written bylaws, maybe bylaws is the wrong word for it, what is the, but, it's bylaws, but, yeah. And so we spent some time discussing and, and really trying to articulate the mission, and not just the mission, but how this committee is best functioning and what its role should be, et cetera. And so we actually made so much progress, we decided to return in the next meeting and, and continue with that process, because it was, it's, it felt so important, and we were being very specific on really every, every, every paragraph, because we want it to be correct before it is brought to the City Council for review and, and discussion and approval or changes. On December 15, I too attended the retirement reception for our Chief Police David Livingstone, wish him all the best. Certainly, many great things were said about him, and he has served our community very well, and he will be missed, but appreciate what he has built and put in place, and appreciate the efforts of, of, of our interim chief, Shorts, and what he's doing, and thank you. And he, he, he ran that meeting, it was lovely, so well done, thank you for doing that. Later that evening was actually a swearing in ceremony for several new officers, and so I felt like the cycle continues, it just, it keeps going. Obviously, this was a fun time of, of Christmas and New Year's, and I had the fun of, of flying to Idaho and driving my son with his car loaded to the gills back from college, and so that was, that was my pre-Christmas fun. But I will take you into 2023, there were a few events that I was involved with. On January 3, I spoke to the Rotary Sunset Club, appreciated that opportunity, and again, appreciate all three of the Rotary Clubs we have here in Simi Valley and the great things that are being done by them. On Thursday, January 5, I attended the SCAG Regional, not, I'm sorry, the SCAG Energy and Environment. Energy and Environment Committee meeting. Two actions were taken. One, we approved the ramp, the Regional Advanced mitigation planning framework and white paper, which basically takes it to the regional council, and and it's a discussion of really of a way to streamline some of the environmental issues that might happen when transportation plans come about. And so that was in discussion. The second, the second action that we took was to, I want to be accurate, release the Transportation Conformity Analysis of the Draft Connect So-Called 2020 Amendment Number Three and 2023 Federal Transportation Improvement Program Consistency Amendment for Public Review and Comment. How's that for a mouthful? So if you would like to read that document and comment, it has now been released and open to the public and and available for for discussion. On Friday, January the 6th, I had I sat down with our Director Raul Avila of District Guan of the of Cuyagus Municipal Water District and had some very good conversation with him. Very much appreciate what he's doing, representing our area. One of the things I particularly appreciated learning about was the strategic plan that he has kind of has been very involved with, where it's basically taken the thrust of Cuyagus not just as a distributor of the California Water Project, but recognizing that they could do more in terms of making sure that we have resources that meet our needs. And if the and if it's not just the California Water Project, then what are those resources? And so anyway, much more of that conversation. I know that we will be having more water discussions on this council, but it was it was very good to sit with him and and discuss what can be done, what they are doing, some of the things that we as a council can support and get behind, but more more to follow in that discussion. And so that it's a, I'm excited for 2023 and what this council's going to do together. So that that concludes my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other than the reports I'm getting from my northern offices that are all being flooded out, I've been getting some texts here from my from work, and we've got rising rising creeks and rivers all up in the north, and people, roads closed and such. So everyone say a prayer for all those people that there's they stay safe, and all our first responders, my son-in-law's work got called into work, so that's a say special thoughts and prayers for them, too. We were gone a long time, and I didn't do a whole lot during this period. I I'm so sorry. So we did not have our EDC meeting December 15th because traditionally in December, we only have the exec meeting. So we did that. The following week, I was sick all week, the week before Christmas. Who gets sick the week before Christmas? And you can't go anywhere. Me, for the first time. So people got gift cards. There there were there were a whole lot of gift cards given out at Christmas this year. We did, January 4th, last Wednesday, we did have our ED Economic Development Collaborative Executive Board meeting. It was our my last one as vice chair, so I will become the chair on the 19th. And we had a couple of changes. A lot of the cities, just like we did tonight, where we changed our committee assignments. We had quite a few new committee, new committee members from different cities joining the board, so that'll be interesting. We lost our Santa Paula gentleman. Oh, my gosh, I can't think of his name. He's been a really a good, strong person on our our board. Sobel. Yes, yes. And he's he's been great. So we lost him because he's the mayor now. So, you know, he had to step down, so they'll do a great job for them on there, but we got new people. I'm looking forward to having new people on the on the board and meeting new people. We will finally, for the first time in a couple of years, have an in-person meeting. January 19th is the annual meeting of the Economic Development Collaborative. It's at the Ventura Crown Plaza. You're all welcome to attend. We're on the top floor. We have speakers and a nice dinner, so it should be a good event. I will take over the gavel. I'm looking so forward to that, can you tell? No, really, it's a good group. So we have a great staff, the CEO and then the staff at the EDC is fantastic, so that really works out well. On Friday, the 6th, I was able to attend the Simi Valley Leadership Meeting. They it's our new class. They had Law Enforcement Day. Interim Chief Shorts did a great job on explaining how things are working. You know, the only problem was when his time was almost up, he said, is my time done? And the commander goes, no, you're the chief, you can have as much time as you want. When my time was up, he just came up and stood next to me. And I said, am I done? He goes, yes. So I said, I I don't rank higher than the chief, I guess, so, you know, but it was pretty funny. So it was a lot of fun. That's really all I did, other than the other thing I wanted to say is happy National Law Enforcement Day to all of our wonderful police departments and our sheriff's department here in town, and we have a new sheriff in town, too. So so that's a good thing. So thank you to everybody, and I hope you all had good holidays, and that 2023 is going to be much better than the last couple of years. So thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Judge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On Wednesday, December 14th, I attended the also attended the holiday lunch truck out here with the In-N-Out Burger truck. Always a great thing to see. I'm glad that the employees seem to like that very much. I think it's a great idea. I do kind of miss having the big room full of people, but I think we get more applicants, there are more people here with this, yeah. So there you go. Thursday, December 15th, before I get into it, I want to right now congratulate interim chief Shorts on his promotion to interim chief of our police department here in Simi Valley. And I'd also like to congratulate the two other, are they assistant chiefs or deputy chiefs, interim?
Assistant.
Assistant, had interim in or acting?
Acting assistant chief.
Acting assistant chiefs, Lincoln Purcell and I'm drawing a blank on Adam's exact name, John, John Adam Zach's name, Sean Adam Zach, for their promotions also. On Thursday, December 15th, I attended the retirement reception for Chief Livingstone. Sorry to see him go, but, you know, I think we're in good hands still, and he has amazing career, and I wish him well in all his retirement. I then attended the swearing in ceremony for our three new police officers. It's always great to see. Saturday, December 7th, I participated, represented the City Council at Wreaths Across America at the Simi Valley Pioneer Cemetery, laying wreaths on all the graves of the veterans there. December 18th, I was unable to handle unable to attend the Hanukkah Celebration at the Town Center put on by Habata Simi Valley because I had to celebrate my wife's family's first night of Hanukkah at their home. So I'm glad that all went well, and I'm glad Rocky was educated. On Wednesday, December 30, 21st, I attended the oath of office for the newly reelected RS RPD board members, Ed Abilay and Brian Denner. Great to see them get reelected, and I know they're going to do a great job as they've been doing. And I think Thursday, January 5th, I did attend the SCAG meeting as a representative for VCTC, the Transportation Committee and the Regional Council, and I'm not going to try and repeat what Elaine told you it was, but that's what we did. On on Friday, February or January 6th, I attended the VCTC meeting in Camarillo, and really not too much putting together our yearly stuff that what we're going to be doing. Everything looks like it's going to be good. And I did share with the council the Caltrans reports and everything like that, so you got to see that. Not too much is going on in our town right now, basically maintaining the guardrails on the freeway is the big thing. Glad to say that most, I think all of the speed signs on the 23 have been taken down now, so there's no more construction zone on the 23 freeway. Thank, finally, finally. That's it, that's in my report. Thank you very much.
Okay. Well, I'm going to start with the employee holiday lunch. Not only am I a big In-N-Out fan, but I really enjoyed having the opportunity to go and try to meet as many city employees as I could. Went up and introduced myself, found out what each and every one of them did, and it was it was I enjoyed that a lot. And I attended the same retirement reception for the chief and the same swearing in of our new officers, and I loved the swearing in of the new officers, kind of like a look into the future for our department. Let's see here. What was the other thing? The on the 21st, I had the honor to swear in the newly reelected members of the Rancho Simi Recreation of Part District Board. Let's see here. On the 31st, I hosted a small intimate gathering of community members to celebrate the New Year. And then on Friday, the 6th, I I attended the City Selection Commission meeting, which is basically a a meeting of the mayors of the various cities in Ventura to select members of certain committees. And that was, that was interesting, but I was completely unprepared because it was completely new, and I was the new guy on the block there. And that is it. So at this point, do we have any requests for future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, or and City Manager, I would like to look at the possibility of increasing our special events budget.
What we can do on that is because there is no time critical issue on it, I look to Carolyn, the audience, we can include that as an item for you to discuss at the budget time. You might as well include it at that time.
That works for me.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's fine.
Yep, so we'll include that.
Okay, so then no motion needed there. All right. Well, then, in that case.
I'm sorry, Mayor, I have also a possible item for future discussion, if that's all right. Had an interesting conversation with a constituent who, and maybe I should have done my research, but would like to be, he's looking at the price of eggs and the lack of eggs in the grocery stores and talking about personal resiliency and and saying, I'd like to put a couple chickens in my backyard. I believe, what?
We have bees.
It was bees. It was bees last time.
It was bees, but we have we have done chickens. You've been here too long. Let me, let me check on if if there is an animal overlay requirement or not.
Would you would you do that?
Yeah, let me do some research on that first.
Okay, and I should, like I said, I should have done my research before bringing it before the council tonight in 10B, but I just, anyway.
Yeah, I I don't, there is a there is an equivalency factor on how many, how many chickens equals a dog? And how many cats equals a duck and everything else in our municipal code, so we should, that was the cows.
It was the cows or somebody feeding crows or something.
Yeah, yeah. So we've we've seen the animal movie already. Let me get some, let me just get some
Okay, I just, yeah. Thank you.
Well, in that case, I might call for a motion to adjourn. Oh, so. Okay, so we will adjourn in the memory of Riverside County Deputy Sheriff Isaiah Cordero, Pamela Mary Link, Justin Link's mother, Principal Engineer, Ken Anderson, BJ's husband, Greg Seaton, Lee Seaton's brother, and Cole Kiblinger and Kirk Smith. Do I have a motion adjourned?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.